Good evening and welcome to the February 21st, 2023 Sayerville Board of Education Meeting. Take notice that this public meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education was transmitted to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger in accordance with Chapter 231 PL Law 1975, further in accordance with NJSA 1046 through 21. Copy of this notice was posted outside the Board Secretary's office and a copy was also filed with the Clerk of the Borough of Sayerville. Please write to salute our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Roke, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Ms. Pylock?
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Can you please summarize executive for us?
The board discussed personnel, including but not limited to agenda items and negotiations related to the Sayerville Education Association.
Okay. There's no correspondence, so if I can have a motion, please, to accept the minutes from the regular and executive session from our last Board of Ed meeting?
Hello.
Second.
Mrs. Bloom, Mr. Walsh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes. Welcome, ladies, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Ms. Pesci, kick us off.
Got it. Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. I'm Gianna Pesci and I'm the SWMHS Student Council Board of Education Representative. I would first like to start off with extracurricular activities. Last week, the student council went around with positive writings on clothespins and clipped them to people's bags for random acts of kindness week, as those students would be surprised to find a positive message with them later in the day. Staying on the same topic as student council, our students who are a part of it will be participating in Read Across America, March 1st and 2nd, and are excited to see and read to the elementary school students. Our FBLA and DECA students are preparing and getting excited for the Atlantic City trip in the beginning of March. Good luck to all of you who are going. Lastly, for extracurricular activities, the next musical at the school will be held March 24th and 25th, with the exciting performance being The Little Mermaid. Now for athletics at the high school. As most winter sports came or are coming to an end, we are now getting ready for spring sports. But now that it's the end of the season, it becomes the most exciting and congratulating part for all seasons. I would first like to start off by congratulating Will Lewis for advancing to the group round of the NJSIAA indoor track and field championship. Next, I would like to congratulate Connor Walsh for winning second place at the NJSIAA district championships. He will now move on to the NJSIAA regionals this Friday and Saturday. Lastly, I want to commend all winter sports for having such wonderful seasons and good luck to all players who advance onto bigger competitions. With that being said, have a great rest of your night and think of your time.
Great, thank you. I don't know if anybody signed up yet for that Read Across America. If you haven't and you have the time, take advantage of it. I think it's all week long, right? They have time slots?
Yeah.
There's nothing like reading to the kindergarten kids or preschool this year, I'm going to try. Should be interesting, but it's fun. It's a lot of fun, so if you have the time, I suggest you do.
And if you're having any difficulty, you know, signing up for a spot, I know, the preschool one's a little tricky, let me know and I'll help you out.
I was clicking and nothing happened.
Yeah, me too.
Have we got an email?
I had different days, different times.
So let me know and I'll direct you to whomever it is that, you know, needs help. I also know that Wilson School reached out. Did anybody get contacted by Wilson? They're looking for readers as well.
Is this replacing the Cat in the Hat's birthday?
No, it's the same thing. It's always done.
Oh, it's, I never, okay.
I have a question for Gianna. Did you go to the Variety Show?
I didn't that night.
Oh.
Yeah. I couldn't get a ticket.
Everybody, you couldn't get a ticket?
Mm-hmm. I couldn't find anybody who had them like last minute, because I forgot about it.
You know the superintendent, just email.
Yeah, you should have let me know. I heard, everybody's raving about it. I heard it was great.
And my son said, "Oh, yeah, I was there, I was running it." I said, "And you didn't tell me, you didn't remind me it was going on?" So I missed it all together. Tells me the next day, I said, "Thank you."
I saw a lot of videos, they looked really good.
Yeah, the kids, I wish I would have gone too, but I didn't have a chance to, but I heard the kids performed magnificently.
We always love it when you perform.
Wow, there might be a surprise coming.
Watch out, Marilyn. He's going to retire anybody, he's going to perform.
Gianna did make it to the district wrestling tournament, though.
Ah.
Oh, my gosh. That's great.
I didn't know she was such a big wrestling fan, very impressed.
Probably not the wrestling, but the wrestlers.
Wow, Mrs. Bloom?
Whoa.
Excellent.
Good job, as always.
Yep, as always.
Mrs. Coons, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. What do you got for us?
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Coons, SMS Student Council Board of Education Representative. I would like to begin with the PTO. On March 24th, the PTO will be hosting a designer handbag bingo and tricky tray event. This is the largest fundraiser for the PTO. Tickets can be purchased by visiting our website at www.mysmspto.com. On March 29th, the PTO is partnering with the school to co-host a family literacy night. The student council sold carnations last week for Valentine's Day. Money will be donated to Imagine, a center for dealing with loss. Class council is also working with the Community Service Club for this month's class competition. The grade level who brings in the most pet food will receive 100 points toward their class competition total. Now on to the Sayerville Middle School sports. Cheerleading. Both competition teams, game day and all music, competed at their first competition on February 18th at Howell High School. Both teams took first place. The all-music team also brought home grand champs for the division. We wish both teams the best of luck this weekend at the NJCDCA state championships. Track and field. The middle school track team is very excited for the upcoming season. Coach Joya and Coach Martucci are ready to work with the team as they set goals and improve throughout the season. The softball team. The Sayerville Middle School softball teams will be starting tryouts on March 8th. The girls are excited for another year of personal growth, team success, and building community spirit. We hope to see you in the bleachers when they start their games in April. The baseball team. The baseball team is excited for their upcoming 2023 season, starting in March. There will be no, there will be tryouts in the beginning of March, and we hope to see lots of new players. Thank you for your time and support.
Great job, Morgan.
Thank you.
Is it too early to get graduation fever yet? Are you not there yet? Like, April it hits, or are you looking to get into the high school? Like, you're looking to go graduate?
Oh.
I'm really kidding you that it's coming.
Oh, no.
Not looking forward to it? Most of the year is great?
She's going to take it day at a time, right?
Morgan, is there any news on duets? Is duets coming back?
Uh-uh, I don't know.
Middle school duets?
That was big.
I heard it's coming back.
That was big, big night.
And I heard they're going to have a great finale.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. Bon Jovi, Labby wing.
Oh, yeah. I hold your breath in that one.
What is it?
It's like a teacher and a student, dude.
Yep, teacher and a student sitting together. Haven't done it since 2018, 19.
With Faith Harris?
Mr. Palmer, I did it back then, yep. Mr. Palmer coordinates that whole thing, so I think that's coming up. So it's similar to the Variety Show. Two great activities for showcasing many talents that our kids have. And speaking of talents, I'm so impressed with our cheer teams. My goodness gracious. Are we, like, letting other teams win occasionally? My goodness, boy, we are, we are pretty dominant when it comes to competition cheer, so kudos to all of our cheerleaders.
That's great.
And our cheer team coaches.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Great job, ladies, as always.
Have a good day. Okay, Mrs. Bloom, Vice President comments?
Comments?
Or highlights?
Highlights, I got highlights. I'll save my comments for later. District highlights. Congratulations to the following Sayerville War Memorial High School art students who were selected to show their paintings and drawings in the 13th Annual Student Exhibition in the Sally D. Francisco Gallery in Leighton, New Jersey on February 4th. Alexander Olmo, Aneah Sergej, Dea Bawa, Isabella Colazo, and Trishel Affiani were those students who showed their work. Isabella's painting, which is entitled "Her Favorite Color Was Green," received an honorable mention from the Annual Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Congratulations to the following student musicians who performed magnificently with the 2023 Central Jersey Music Educators Association. Honors Symphonic Band, Sophia Zamuzakis, Alana Noel, Isaiah Deby, Ariel Mensha, Cadence Koncar, and August McColl. Congratulations to the members of the Sayerville War Memorial High School Girls Indoor Track and Field Team, which won its seventh consecutive Greater Middlesex County Conference White Division Championship. Congratulations to the Sayerville War Memorial High School Competition Cheer Team, which won first place in the Impact Cheer and Dance All-Music and Game Division. Congratulations to the Sayerville Middle School Competition Cheer Team for being crowned grand champions at the Howell High School Cheer Competition. They also earned first place in game day and all music areas. And those are the highlights.
Thank you very much. I do not have any comments this evening. I'll reserve my time for Dr. Labby later. Sorry, Doc. We have some presentations this evening, sir.
Yes, we do. We are going to resume our budget presentations. As everyone knows, we have buildings and grounds, transportation, and personnel this evening. That will conclude our presentations. We're hopeful that the governor is going to give his budget address on February 28th, so that means hopefully by March 1st or 2nd, we will receive our figures in terms of state aid for next year. So our fingers are crossed that not only are we going to get the same state aid, but we're going to get equalization aid, which we believe we still are owed about $1.5 million in equalization aid. So we, our fingers are crossed that we're going to get that.
We were down, what, 18 million a year, right? That was the number that would float around all the time. Where did we, we narrowed that gap to where? Where are we now, about 10, 11?
So are you referring to the adequacy budget?
Yeah.
So that, it's the dollar amount that says how much we need to adequately educate our students.
Yes.
And that's our equalization aid plus our local tax levy. When I started with the district, we were 25 million below adequacy. As of last year, we were only 6 million below.
Six, okay, I thought it was 18, it was up to 25, huh?
Yeah, so 18 million was probably three budget years ago.
Okay, we're getting there.
We're getting closer.
Getting there. And once they're there, that's it? I mean...
Yeah, at that point, I would assume that they're going to continue to reevaluate the formula, but also continue to fund the formula.
Sure.
So as our enrollment changes, that can change things. But from our last year enrollment, we were still about 1.5 million below what the equalization calculation was.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So with getting our state aid figures by March 1st, we are on time to ask you folks to approve our preliminary 2023-2024 budget on March 7th. With that said, we are going to start our presentations off this evening with Mr. Siniglia, who is going to present to you the 2023-2024 transportation budget. Mr. Siniglia?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm going to put my initials on that 1 million plus coming back. I think we're going to need it over here.
Well, we hope.
Okay, here we go with my 23-24 transportation budget presentation. My first slide there, we have our courageous bus driver on there, if you see who that is. I'm going to put a little name tag on him to point that out.
I never looked so good.
Yeah, it looks great. So just to start out with, with one of my initiatives is creating a safer, efficient program by being proactive through monitoring daily metrics for transporting Sayerville transportations safely and on time, ready to learn. So I'd like to start off by talking about where we are right now. Again, another one of my slogans there that I carry out, providing students with safe, efficient transportation while maintaining mechanical reliability and a stable, qualified workforce. So currently, we sit at 59 buses in our fleet, 44 full-size buses, 15 mini-buses. We have 54 in-house routes, and we're servicing them with 50 drivers. We are short four drivers to cover our work on a daily basis. We accomplish that by packing those school buses as many students as we possibly can. And sometimes we got to go back, make a second run to pick up those kids, whatever we got to do to make sure that we are getting everybody to school, and we have been. I'm proud of that, especially being short four drivers on a daily basis. We have 11 contracted general ed routes this year. Last year, we were at 16. So we've taken five more back in-house. We're running our subscription buses for 292 students. 75 of those are qualified for free or reduced lunch. 217 of them are paying for that bus. We are transporting in Sayerville just under 5,000 public school students and 266 aid-and-助 students we have. And out-of-district special ed routes are, at the time that I ran the spreadsheet, was 59 students in 27 routes. We're running that with four office staff. We're down one mechanic, so we're, we lost one earlier this year, so we're only working off of two mechanics, which is a challenge in itself. 50 drivers, we're short four. 28 aides, we're short four aides. So that's where we are right now. Some goals that I had set for my department last year that we did accomplish. We replaced our old routing software. We revised a lot of stops to remove unsafe maneuvering, unsafe bus maneuvering practices. I know a lot of people were not too happy with that, but it's, it had to be done. You know, there's no, not necessary for us to take a risk to go down to a street that we cannot safely get a bus out of. I do not want to back up a school bus. We try never to back up a school bus unless absolutely necessary. And we look at the risk versus the reward when we come into that situation, and, you know, if it's, if it's a must and there's no other way around it, we'll do it. But if there's another way, work around it, we're not going down those streets that we cannot get back out of.
I wasn't sure if you were here, there was a woman, remember she was down by the Wawa? And she was talking to us about that unsafe route, which I'm sure you're talking about here. In those cases, where do those people have to go now? Just for my edification.
So when we had the instance with the Wawa, I think is, so two Wawas in town, right? So I think you're talking about the one over by Crestview on 9. Yeah, so my first year that I was here, I spent a lot of time at looking what was going on and what was safe, wasn't safe, what could change. That, during that time period, I think I had probably three or four calls that buses took out stop signs in Crestview backing up to turn around. Stop sign today, car tomorrow, child the next day, right? So we need to stop that. So I worked out an alternate stop on the Wawa side of the parking lot. It's safe to get to, it's a beautiful set of stairs that they put in at access point, it's lit. Some parents weren't too happy with it, they called Wawa corporate office, and the corporate office made us put a stop to it. So the only other option I had was to try and get mini-buses in there. So we end up running a couple of routes in there with mini-buses to pick those kids up and get them over to the school. You know, it's not the ideal situation, we need those mini-buses for kids that really need them.
Of course.
But it was the safest alternative that we could work for that. So I mentioned, we, we reduced our 16 routes that we were contracting out to 11, which is really good. We implemented Zoner ground traffic control, which is able to give me my metrics that I need to put in my KPIs to improve our process. So that was big. So, you know, we have visibility just about on anything we need on a school bus at any given time throughout the day. We are short four buses from the install, not because we don't have the equipment, our buses weren't available when they were here, they were in for service. So we'll get those put in as soon as possible. I installed, and you know, this is a big one for everybody, I have seven school buses that have a red light camera on it. There is no legislation in New Jersey that will allow us to outsource or bring in a company that will monitor them and issue tickets directly to the people that blow our red lights. So what we did is, I'm able to view the images that we capture, when we capture them from coming out on the bus, and we'll only know if the driver reports it. There's no automatic reporting on it. This is, this is like basic entry-level red light camera that we're going to pilot, or we have been piloting to see how it would work out. We can pull those videos, put it together, and then call in a representative. Sergeant Braille has agreed to come in and view those with us when we get them, to see if there is any type of footage on there that they could use, that they would be able to prosecute. I haven't had any footage on that yet that I can do. We did have some instances that, I have some slides on it, and we'll go over them when we get to that, so we'll come back and revisit that a little later on in my presentation. But just to finish up our goals that we accomplished this year, we've also, I've identified a safety and training curriculum that we're going to adopt in our new budget from a company called Vector Solutions. They will provide us with all of the necessary training materials that we need to legally train our drivers the way that we're supposed to be training them. And it will also allow us to get our ELDT certification, which is the entry-level driver training program that is now required nationwide. In order to, for us to train our own drivers, we have to have that certification, and we have to document and report it to the federal motor carrier. We don't have that yet, we will once we start getting all this new material in. And last year, over the summer work, we wanted to touch base on that. Previously, we outsourced pretty much all of our out-of-district special needs. From as far as I can go back, I see the most that we ever done any time was two routes that we did in-house for special needs. Last year, we serviced 11 of them. So that not only saved us a lot of money from going through the commissions, it also kept our drivers working and kept them employed and kept them happy through the summer. So we had a lot of great accomplishments and are proud of everything that we did here last year. So let's move on to next year. So my 23-24 goals is to increase my driving staff to 60 drivers and 33 aides, and I'd like to see them all in uniforms. I would like to increase our mechanic count from the three that we should have now up to four. The recommended ratio for school bus mechanics to bus is between 15 to 20 to one bus, 15 to 20 buses to one technician, one mechanic. We will be 22 to 1 in September with our new fleet. If we're at three mechanics. If we go to four mechanics, we will be at 17 to 1. So again, the recommended ratio is 15 to 20, we'll be right in the middle of that. That will also, that number should stand for us from that point forth. Even if we picked up another five, six, seven, eight buses over the next couple of years, we'll still be good with four mechanics.
Fortunately, most of our fleet is new, right? Because we've been, has to be between one and five years.
So we've been, that's why we've been able to get away with it so far.
Right, yeah.
Sooner or later, you know, it, it ends. It goes from, you know, checking, you know, changing brake pads, checking fluids, you know, and changing fluids. You know, as the fleet ages, they require much more maintenance. Again, we're going to, we're going to obtain our federal motor carrier safety administration credentials for the entry-level driver training program through Vector Solutions. I want to, and I've been working on, creating a dashboard, transportation dashboard for each school. What this dashboard will do, will be assigned to each school, they can have access to it whenever they want. Any question they have as to where a bus is along their route, did it stop where, did it stop, you know, is it on its way, is it close? All they got to do is look at the dashboard, it'll be a live feed of that bus along its route and where it is. It's, it would be seamless, say we just have to look at it. We are, we need to purchase eight buses for our fleet. We're going to do five big buses, one minibus, and one replacement minibus and a wheelchair bus. We definitely need another wheelchair vehicle. Right now, we're having to, at times, when one goes out of service or one breaks down, we're having to go drop kids off at the school and then come back out with that wheelchair bus to get another school, to get them back in. I don't want to operate like that, so that additional wheelchair bus will help us out. I'm looking to reduce contractor routes to five. That means taking back an additional six this year. We will do that with the driver count and vehicles that we're adding. I would like to see more daily field trips from the schools that will work within the timeframe, that we can do them in-house rather than contracting them out to subcontractors and keeping our drivers earning throughout the day, giving them more opportunity. Those hours would be, they would have to be, the schools would have to work to get their trips between 9:30 in the morning and 1:30 in the afternoon, we'd be back so we could service our afternoon routes, the pre-K in high school. I want to introduce more KPIs to improve our efficiency and safety. I want to roll out a driver and aide award appreciation program, which really is going to be costless to the district, just something that I will do in-house, just something I want to roll out, to keep all the drivers knowing that we really do appreciate them every day. We would, we need a properly equipped fleet service truck. The more we grow, the more we need it. I will continue to explore the EV possibilities, which I know is another big question that's been popped around throughout the board. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because there's really not much more that we can do about it, but if we want to touch base on it right now, we could, I could tell you where we are with it. So we are currently on a five-year list for the clean school bus program through the EPA. It's currently, they are currently awarding to school districts that have at least a 20% poverty rate. We're not meeting that at this point.
What the hell's the correlation between poverty and, no, I'm not a fan of these buses.
Yeah.
Trust me, I'm not, because of a million other reasons, but what, is it, did they give a reason as to why, I guess, a quote-unquote poorer district or?
They go into many, many things and how the poorest districts were built close to highways, so they're exposed to so much pollution already, so, you know, there's a whole...
They gave some reasoning, though, behind it.
There's a whole thing behind it, you know?
I'd like to see that.
Good question for Congressmen, I don't know if you can answer that one. And we're also on a New Jersey Zip Zero Emissions Program, and so that program is offering vouchers up to, the most that we would qualify, if we were awarded that, would be $168,750 for a big bus. And just to put that in perspective, a minibus right now, electric minibus, costs between $275,000 and $325,000. And big buses right now, electric big buses are starting about $450,000. And the charging stations are running in excess of $30,000 each, so...
Excuse me, Patrick, I, I must be hearing things. I think I heard you just say $450,000.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
$450,000 for a new bus.
I asked it up.
So that's why I really want to spend a lot of time on it, because unless we're getting one of those grants, I don't, I don't see any reason why we would ever consider even buying one. I could buy four other buses, you know, three and a half full-size buses for one. But that's where we are with that, but we'll continue to monitor. We're on those lists. The other one is, is the first one that I had mentioned through the EPA, is the one where they would actually, I believe they would actually purchase the bus for us. It wouldn't really cost us anything more than it would cost us for a new bus, a current price for a new bus, which is about 100, I think we were coming in about $125,000, $127,000 for a, for a new full-size for a, for a new full-size school bus right now. So that's what they would cost us. So if we get lucky and we get on that list, then we'll grab a few, but I, I don't see that happening. I'm not optimistic about that. So an increase in the number of interior cameras on the buses there, it's something that we've, we've had the call from, from especially the smaller schools, the pre-Ks, where the kids disappear behind the seats, and...
Board members, if you look at the next page in your presentation, you'll see what Patrick's talking about in terms of the pictures.
Yeah, so, so what I did was, this is a typical pre-K bus. This is the cameras that are on it. I gave you a shot of each of the cameras in this bus. These seats are pretty much almost all full, but we, you know, and we get a lot of calls, you know, Johnny kicked little Billy in his shin and, you know, you know, what's being done about it? And we go to look on the video, I said, well, I didn't see that happen. I didn't even see, I didn't even see little Johnny on the bus, you know? But so if you, if you look at two pages further, that is the ideal camera placement on a full-size bus. That's where you get full coverage of all your seats and what's going on. We, we have a camera in the front that faces out, and we have that same one that faces back also and covers down the row of the bus. We have one that's behind the driver that picks up the service door, so we can see who's coming on and off that bus, and it picks up the first couple of rows on the bus. And then we have one further down on the driver's side, about midway through, with a wide-angle lens that picks up as much as it can. And we have another one in the rear of the bus that picks up primarily the problem spot on the school buses, the last couple of rows. And then you get a little bit up. And that's, those are the results of the camera shots that you see on that previous So just to give you some idea on what it would require for us to add those cameras on that bus is about $3,600 per bus to add cameras to those buses, but that would also include adding a stop-arm camera to the bus as well. So about $3,600 per bus. And then we want to work on, one of my goals to work on is to enforce our stop-arm violations. And like I said, we'll, we'll work with the sheriff or police department to find which violators are enforceable, and then work through that and see what we can accomplish through that. So, and I mentioned earlier about different types of stop-arm camera systems that are available if we had the proper legislation. If we had legislation in place, I don't know if there's anything through the works. If there's not, you know, I think there should be. Somebody should be pushing to, to do this. So there are other states that have it, and a stop-arm company will come in. They will do it for free. They will equip our buses with those stop cameras for free. It takes automatic shots of people who violate the stop-arm. It sends them to a central station where they monitor them, put together all the shots that they need with all the documentation that they need, and they issue the summonses to the people that did it. They recoup a percentage of that money from those violations, and that's how they make their business. So they, they usually take about 80% of the violation that they get to do that. If we decided to go on our own and foot this bill to add this, to increase our hard drive capability and our camera capability to put on our buses, they will, and, and legislation gets passed. They have, they'll work it out with us where we would not pay 80%. They would take it over at that point, but since we had already bought the equipment, we would negotiate the percentage they get. They may take 20% to do all that and process it. So there's, if legislation ever gets passed, there is an opportunity, if we did go this to possibly recoup some of the money that we had spent. Okay. So I talked about the, the stop-arm violations. Again, if you go down to the, the next video slide that I enclosed, this is an instance that happened a couple of weeks ago while the bus was stopped. I believe this may have been on Washington Road.
Yeah, it's on Washington Road down by the...
And the bus was stopped. It was offloading a pre-K student. There are two cars stopped on the opposite side of the road, like they should be. If you look in the far distance, there's a car coming out into the lane in the first shot, and you move to the right, see him coming further down. You move to the left, and there he is, and there he is going right through our red lights. So not only does this guy run our red lights, he passed two cars to go on and do it.
A double yellow line.
And double yellow line.
And a double yellow line. And we could not do anything with this photo because this car does not have a license plate on the front. So we couldn't do anything with it. So that being said, I took one of the buses that we have, the current stop-arm camera on it, which is, we have, we have, again, we have the entry level version. So we only have a camera that will take a shot from the front that gets a car coming by. Since we have video through the front window, and we still couldn't get the license plate, I had the camera moved and facing rearward, so we could get the car passing here, and, and then we would get a shot of him as he passed by. So if he doesn't have a front license plate, we would get a picture of his rear plate. And that we could probably prosecute it off of, assuming he had a rear plate on his car as well, but we don't know. So, and then another instance happened the other day, after I had already put this presentation together, was what I believe to be even more dangerous, was that a car from behind passed us. So the car was behind us, the bus was stopped, it was loading kids at the time, passed us and went right past the school bus. There could have been easily a kid crossing the street or whatever. So I mean, the point is, it's extremely dangerous, and we should be doing something about it.
Are there any areas that are worse than others that the drivers are saying this happens more often than not?
It, it's random. It's random, so my intentions were with these seven buses to strategically place them where we thought we would get violators. It just, it just haven't, hasn't worked out for us, you know? It's just hit or miss, you know? So wherever that bus is and if it occurs, I can't wait to catch somebody and enforce it. So challenges for this upcoming next budget and school year. My biggest challenge is time. So getting buses to their second and third trips on time primarily at dismissals is a huge, huge challenge and at times impossible. So the traffic has increasingly gotten worse, especially in the Washington Ernst and Rhodes, and there's just not enough time between the start and dismissal bells, particularly going into the third tier for us to get there. Both mornings are a little bit easier, afternoons are impossible on some of them. And that's typical of school bus routes. We can get there early, we, we can get to more schools in the morning because we can drop and go, and we can stagger our times, but at the afternoon where every single bus has to be there for a dismissal and they dismiss at the same time, that gives us more of a opportunity window to get them there. Ideally, we need 10 more minutes between pre-K to our Samsel and, and elementaries. So we're currently, if we, so we're not that bad in the mornings. We have a handful, we, we just, we need some more time in the morning to get everybody there, so everybody's there on time. The afternoons are, are really bad. So, and if you, if you look at our dismissal times, so the UES and the middle school both dismiss at the same time at 2:45, but they go in at different times in the morning. So we have a little more room in the morning. In the afternoon, they both dismiss at 2:45. By the time they load and get out onto the roads, it's almost 3 o'clock. Middle school is usually right about 3 o'clock when we're pulling out of that lot. Samsel does a little bit of a better job. We start pulling out of there a lot between 2:50 to 2:58. We're about all out on that, but that still only leaves us 20 minutes to complete those entire runs and get to their elementary school. So I, I beg of you guys to consider some sort of bell change in that time period so that we can do a better job at getting our kids to school and home from school on time. I understand it was a big pushback on, for the teachers this year because they were staying so late and they want to be compensated for the extra time now that they're kept at that school. So, you know, that would go away if we could get some more time to get those kids out of school on time.
Is that even feasible, Dr. Lavey?
Yeah, Patrick and I have spoken about this, and Patrick did provide me with what he feels are, you know, the times that we need. So I'm going to be sharing that with the Student Achievement Committee and the Governance Committee at our next meeting on February 28th. And then what we'll do is we'll begin discussing it with the entire board if we move forward from there. But the, the times that Patrick suggested are reasonable. Obviously, some people are not going to be happy, even if it's five, 10 minutes, but I, I think that for the reasons expressed by Patrick, we need to do this. Need to create a little bit more buffer between the schools. That way, our, our buses are getting there on time without having to rush too, and they're in a, you know, again, there is more traffic, especially in that area, you know, Ernston and Washington, as well as on Main Street too, in that, that area as well, so. I will be sharing that with those committees.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lavey, I apologize. You finished?
Yeah.
Did, did you put the matrix together? Did you like come up with this idea?
We, we did, yeah.
Good, good job, really.
And I, I discussed it with Dr. Lavey, and, you know, we, we, he didn't give me what I wanted, but, you know, we, we had to, we had to meet in the middle somewhere.
I never do.
Think it outside the box, though, that's, that's good.
But, yeah, and it, and it's a common problem. You know, I, I've, I've been in other school districts where, you know, they had to have done that because of the explosion of the people that move into the town. And, you know, more people moving into town, more cars on the road, more kids going to school, more buses, more cars, it just doesn't, just not enough time to get it done. So it's a common problem, you know, we just have to address it. So the other challenges are budget-wise is for our contractors. So last year, our prices for our contractors went up 23% year over year. This year, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that at least the one contract that we have and the minimum routes that I'm going to ask them to renew, will renew them at the CPI, which is about 5.8, 5.86% this year, which is higher than I can remember in the last 15, 20 years. So I, I don't know if it'll be enough. I'm hopeful that it will be. The good point is that, you know, it's, it's only going to be a handful of routes. We, we've taken a big chunk out of that. Hiring drivers, aides, and mechanics continues to be a challenge for us, surprisingly to me. I think we put together a really good package for them. I am hopeful that we will start seeing more applicants come when we get closer to the end of the school year for, to fill the 10 spots that I need for, for next school year. You know, I guess it's a good sign that the drivers want to not jump ship and leave the other companies high and dry to come over and work for us. So, you know, I admire that, and hopefully, you know, we'll start drivers that will come over for September. And then the other biggest challenge for us is the lack of space to maintain our staff and service our fleet. We're all aware of that, and we're all working on it, but that is one of our challenges. And that, did I go over 10 minutes?
I think you broke a record.
I might have. It's a lot of material.
You know, before board members begin asking questions, I just, I want to compliment you on one very innovative idea that you had with regard to the hiring of drivers. You know, we, we've been talking a lot about, and you just referenced it earlier. Everybody, you know, keeps stealing from each other. We hire drivers from this vendor. Now they're short, and they're going to short-end another district. We hire from another district and so forth. But the idea that you had in terms of recruiting people to come in and providing them with the training and paying for that training for them to become drivers, I think was very innovative, very out of the box, and it doesn't contribute to that stealing from another vendor or another district. And it also, it, it creates a feeling in which, you know, they, they feel indebted to what we've done for them. So, you know, kudos to you, Pat. That was a great idea, and I think we've yielded, Mr., our Dr. Agley said, I think we yielded four drivers from that program that you created.
So we, we have, we have two that are currently driving for us that came through that program, and we have two that are currently bus aides and are in that program right now, working on getting their school bus driver's license.
So anybody watching this video, you want to be a bus driver, we'll hire you as a bus aide, and we'll pay for the training, which is about $2,000, by the way.
It does cost us about $2,000.
We'll pay that, we'll train you so that you can get your commercial driver's license to drive a school bus.
Terrific idea.
And we're, we're asking them for a, a time commitment to us before we would not ask for that money back from them that we laid out for it. So, you know, where they work for us for two years, we pay for all their training, get them licensed, they get a hell of a job. They're going to be starting at $30 an hour in September. So they're getting a great job, a great pay rate, you know, and we're paying for their training.
So if you're watching at home, email me.
Call, 732-416.
Any questions for Patrick? I think you did a great job explaining it. I have none, and that's, that's something.
Thank you.
I was going to ask about the commitment. That's perfect, because we do the same thing with our teachers.
Yes, we do.
Perfect.
Yeah, there's the only thing, like, we spoke with that when I first came here with Rick, and he was like, what you do with teachers is you pull their certificate if they don't give you a certain amount of time or something.
We can, we could go after, unless they leave the state. If they stay in New Jersey, yes.
Yeah, and we couldn't, there is no recourse as a bus driver. There is nothing that we could do if, if we hired somebody. So we put together this program so that we will be able to do that.
Sure. Yeah, great. Think outside the box again, love it. Any questions? Thanks, Pat.
Great job, Patrick.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's shift gears to buildings and grounds. Mr. Coleman's burger, I believe, is in the house somewhere. There he is. I think he got a hair, did you get a haircut for this too? Very looking sharp. You look very sharp. I tell you what, you and Patrick, who looks like George Clooney, I mean...
He does, he does.
The two of you together.
I promise, though, I won't be that long.
Not even close.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody again for letting me present, and as usual, if it wasn't for all yous on the board, we would have none of this. Since I've been in this district for quite a few years, we've come very, very long, and I, I'm still amazed of all the work that we have done. I'm proud of it. There's a few things that I'm very proud of this year. This probably was one of my hardest years to get through. Somebody sitting at that table has a lot of expectations, and we have to meet them.
Aaron. It's Aaron.
And honestly, we did. First, I would like to thank everybody in my department, whether it was my secretary, a custodian, a maintenance guy, the stockroom, a grounds guys, everybody pitched in this year unbelievably. We needed everybody's help because what we did was quite remarkable, in my opinion. I mean, we took Slover School, took it from an administrative building, put it into a preschool, and moved every... an administrative building, put it into a preschool, and moved everybody here. And I would like to say, I think we did a better job moving the furniture and everything else than the contractor that we did hire.
I agree a hundred percent.
So I'd like to really, they do need recognition for all the hard work that they do continue to give us. The first thing I'd like to talk about of an achievement is our large space air condition. However, we're not totally done with it, as you can tell by the climate in this room. We have the unit in. We're just waiting for the startup, and then we'll have heat, I hope, by the next meeting for you guys, or air conditioning, depending on why the weather's been going lately. This past Monday, we installed six units on three schools, so we're moving fast. So once we can able finish everything, because now that we're in the heating system, we got to be careful what we shut on and shut off so we don't freeze up like we had last year.
Will it be ready for May?
What's that?
We're talking this year, will it be ready for May when it gets warmer?
It's going to be ready in March.
A lot of it will be ready in March. Wilson School should be done for the cafeteria, and the gymnasium here will be done. The high school, all the auxiliary gyms should be done. The problems that we're, the two schools that we're having problems is going to be Arlet School, because we had to do an abatement, but then we hit the winter months once we were all done. And that start date, I know it's going to sound crazy, but we have all the equipment in place. But for it to work, we have to do duck work and rip out ceilings and everything. And at Eisenhower, we have to do an abatement yet. And that's going to all start around June twenty-six, barring, nothing changes in our calendars. We might gain three days if, you know, that white stuff doesn't come. And hopefully, we will get started earlier, because we got to rip out ceilings and everything else. We can't do that while the kids, there's just no way we can get it turned over in a weekend. So we're moving forward with that. As I said about the Slover School, we took that, made it into a preschool, changed everything, added air conditioning half the school. And right now, it's actually a great running program, in my opinion. Kids seem very happy. We do have more work, as you'll see. The thing that hit my heart probably the most is the Bombers Cafe. Amazing program. And yes, I'm getting choked up because I have a son that I wish was here when it happened. But it didn't, but at least now we got it. And I hope everybody loves it. I mean, a lot of work went into it, and it was well worth it. And David and Rick had the vision, and I just helped follow through with it. And I appreciate all of them for going for that. In order to help Patrick out, we're moving forward for a transportation complex. I had another name for it, but Aaron didn't quite like it, because it's been what we called it all the years that I've been here. But it's a beautiful facility. We just have to get through some times in figuring out where we can save the most money and get the best that we can. And once we get it all for, we'll start for next year. And of course, today, we took our first meeting on the referendum. We had a pre-bid meeting today at the high school for doing the H V A C work at the upper levels at the high school and Shrewman School. There's other phases that are going to be happening over the summer, windows at Arlet, I'm just going to name a few, the rest of Arlet, some roofs all over the district, and we'll just keep moving forward on that. And basically, all the other achievements we had is all the, you know, cleaned all the buildings. We fixed everything that we possibly could. We might have started painting a few rails for somebody. I know we have more to do. However, we were a little busy, but we'll get to it. We'll find the time for you.
Not for me, it's with the kids.
Well, for everybody in the district. And we might have put a staircase somewhere, maybe at the football field.
Yes, did you hang the lamp, Jim?
We did not hang the lamp yet.
You know when you hang.
I will.
The stairway to heaven?
Yes, stairway to heaven at the bomber field. Okay, moving on to my goals for next year. The Slover School, as you said, you know, I said we started working on, we still have more work to do. We would like to get the whole bottom end of the school, the bottom floor of the school open, which involves the all-purpose room. Currently, that floor is in bad shape because it was our stockroom for many years. So we need to replace that, and we're going to replace the hallway. But we'll do that with budgeting funding that Aaron has found for us, and hopefully, it'll stay there for us, and we can get that floor done and get, we'll actually have a place for the kids to go play inside, too. So that'd be great. Still at Slover School, we have, if anybody drove through the lot, we all know, it needs to be done. And we're going to start that as soon as possible for, hopefully for July one, depending on what programs we have going on. But it'll be done by the end of the summer, so we'll have a nice fresh and paved and painted lot there. As I said about the referendum, we started the projects. It should be starting in June, as long as the bids go out and are awarded. We can start as early as ten days after the contracts are signed. So it could start like as early as May. Hopefully, it does. We can arrange stuff that we can get it done, and we can get it done as soon as possible. I mean, it's going to be a long thing. We're thinking two years, but with timelines on all the equipment, as we've seen with the other stuff that we've been doing, I'm hoping we're done in three years. And I'm sure we all are. So all of our schools will have mainly fresh air coming in, and the air conditioning is an added bonus. We constantly, you know, less work for all our guys, because, I mean, we're constantly working. We go out on weekends to make sure that we have heat. We're constantly, you know, because this stuff's old. And hopefully, we'll get it all done as soon as possible. And the same thing with the large space air condition, as I said, we're behind on because of the stuff that we had to get, and we have to do the ceilings, which we can't do until the summer. As now for a couple capital things, the S U E S parking lot, we need more space since we've moved in here. We have plannings going in effect, so as long as we have all the money that comes in with the state aid, I mean, everybody wants a piece of this money, so we'll see what we can do. And hopefully, we'll get that. And then if anybody's ever entered the high school stadium, I think we all know why we need to upgrade that. We have a plan, well, everyone in this room has a plan of better brickwork, better gates along the whole field, so it looks better, what this town deserves. Other than that, that's all I got right now. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
No, you guys were getting, since COVID and throughout, really, your crew has been amazing, you know?
It's been tough, but.
We recognize you then, but it should be each year. You're right.
Yeah.
Do a great job.
Yep.
I agree. And, I mean, just last summer, I've never seen, I've never seen a department do as much as your department did last summer. And, yeah, you were stressed, but you never cracked. You had faith.
I almost fought with Audrey, but, you know.
But you had, you had faith in your people, and you had faith in yourself, and you got it done. And everyone was saying, it's no way. There's no way you're going to get this done. And you did it. And it speaks volumes about you, Jim. And I've said it before so many times to so many people, and I'll say it right here in public, there's nobody that knows these buildings better than you, and there's no one more vested in this school district than you. And, you know, we're very blessed to have you here. And you've demonstrated that every day that you've worked here, but never more so than than this past summer. And, you know, while we were all home during Christmas, guess who was working because of a pipe exploded? Jim and his team of people, they came in on Christmas, because when something breaks, they come in. And that speaks volumes about Jim, as well as the amazing people in our Buildings and Grounds Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they appreciate it.
If I can, I mean, you guys pretty much covered it, but I just want to re-echo those of us that have known, you've known that you've always come in on your days off, even when something's not broken, just to make sure everything is running right. Not only the work you've done is amazing, but the one thing that they didn't mention that, well, how it'd be something to say, because you guys stole all my other thunder, is you've always done a great job, but you've also done a great job with innovation. Every time there was a problem that couldn't get solved, or someone said, can't be done, or it's going to cost too much, you always found a way, whether it's at the bomber cafe, or whether it's the staircase, or whatever it is, you always found an innovative and creative way to solve the problem. You weren't just, threw your hands up and said, couldn't get done. You found answers. You didn't take no for an answer. So thank you.
Well, if you asked David, I always thought I would know.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jimmy?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jimmy.
And we'll finish with Dr. Agulies and personnel.
Oh, no, it's hard to follow George Clooney and Bob the Builder, but I'll give it my best shot.
Did he just say Bob?
Thank you very much. We're going to be discussing human resources professional development for this year and for next year. The goals are, as you see in red, are ongoing. I'm going to touch base on those goals again later in the in the presentation, so just that you have an understanding of what we're doing. Some of the highlights of H R, Jim just talked about what his department did to move the preschool into Slover. Our department did a tremendous job as well, because we had to staff that building once it was up and running. So we helped transition Slover from into a preschool, transition hiring staff needed and completely staffed the new preschool, transferred folks over, much like we did with Cheesequake. We had a little practice the year before, and then Slover added a couple of new challenges, but we got it done, and the school opened with a full complement of teachers and staff. So we're happy about that. We restructured the H R department since we had an opportunity to move into the U E S, to Samsel. We were able to bring everybody into one office. So the entire team works together, and it has been, it has really expedited the work that we're able to do there, because everybody's literally one shout away. And it's the teamwork that we have in there, and the way we're able to expedite hiring, data, data entry, handle any issue that comes up, whether it's somebody who needs to go out on an emergency or emergency personal days, et cetera. The way we restructured the H R department has really sped up that process, and we're happy about that. One of the issues that really, my department, not me, but my department, really was instrumental in getting everybody processed and put in, in, board-approved after the, after the S E A contract was approved. Really, Karen Havens and Rosie, who helped take over some of Karen's responsibilities, and Kathy Anakon, they did a phenomenal job making certain that everybody was put correctly into their twenty-one, twenty-two salaries, and then again, twenty-two, twenty-three salaries, within a space of two months. And if that sounds like, well, that's part of their job, I think Aaron could tell you just how difficult a process that was. And yet, on top of everything else, my staff got that done. And really, they deserve the kudos. They did everything when it comes to that. And they should be recognized for that. We have a successful research partnership going on. It's ongoing with King University. I'm going to talk about that in a later slide, but that's one of the highlights that we have. We've developed a number of partnerships that are bearing fruit. One of the universities actually sent an email to me the other day that stated that we never say no to student teachers. We never say no. And not only student teachers, but counselors, psychologists, you name it. Anybody who needs either hours or needs something to complete their degree, we always say yes. We take, and I'll show you in a minute what I mean by that. But one of the universities actually said that because we always say yes, and they have partners who have said no quite often, that we're going to be the first stop. We get first dibs on all their students. And that, to me, says a lot about the partnerships that we've developed over the years, and what kind of leadership and what kind of teacher recruitment we're doing. And also, I got to give it up to our staff. Our staff is doing an incredible job being cooperating, cooperating teachers, mentors, and so forth. So word of mouth is getting out there that Saraville is the place to train, and I'm very proud of that. I think that that is something that the district should be proud of. When I talked about partnerships with colleges and universities and taking on student teachers and educational interns, just to give you an idea of what we've done so far this year, and how, and the breadth and depth of what we're doing, we have one student teacher from Grand Canyon University, nine from King University, one from Monmouth University, one from Montclair University, one from N J C U, one from, one from Irwin University, four from Rutgers University, two from Seton Hall University, one from T C N J. It's a total of twenty-one students ranging from classroom teachers, school counselors, psychologists, and speech therapists that have all done either their, either their student teaching or their educational internships in our district. And I, that says a lot about our principals, that says a lot about our teachers, that says a lot about our directors, who are willing to take on these folks. We were taking people on during the pandemic, so, and it continues to grow, and we've developed some really good partnerships. So something we're proud of. Because the goals are ongoing, they're the same in twenty-three, twenty-four that they were in twenty-two, twenty-three. With that first goal, not to read it to you, but it's the belief of the district that everyone, regardless of position within the district, faculty, staff, student, parent, or community member, should feel able to bring their whole selves to the district and achieve their full potential. And we're looking to do more, we're trying to get that message out there. I think we're doing a good job this year. We've actually done it with our students. We've had two committees, one at the high school, one at the middle school, with Student Advisory Committee. And we're getting the good, the bad, and the ugly, which we're going to be sharing with administration after the end of the meetings with our students. It started out as having three committee meetings. We've taken it up now to, by the end of the year, we will have had five. And in fact, we've talked about it so much, and some of the returns that we're getting from our students, that one of the teachers from the U E S, from Samsel, asked if they could join the middle school committee, because they're looking to do the same advisory committee here next year. So we're expanding that advisory committee. One of the goals that we're setting with our staff is that, based on the feedback and the advice that we're getting from students, we're going to set up another advisory committee with teachers and staff members and so forth to kind of address the issues that the students have seen and make changes where we need to make changes and highlight the positives that our students have seen. With that second bullet or that second item, we're committing to true representation across all levels of the district. Not only, not only do we think it's ethically right, but it's in the best interest of the members of our community. Our students and our community should be their authentic selves, and they should feel that they can be their authentic selves in our district and in our schools. In partnership with King University, Dr. Fall is in her second round of interviews with parents, students, staff, anybody who volunteered initially in, I believe, October, when she sent out surveys to our, to our parents, to our students, to her staff. It's a five-year process, so it's a longitudinal study, looking at the impact that our, how our educational practices impacts our students, specifically students who are multilingual. And she's already looked at some of the, she's got a lot better feedback than she expected, which is nice. She got a lot more volunteers than they were expecting. Typically, when she partners with a school, she doesn't expect to get a large group of volunteers, and she seems to be very happy with the volunteers, I'm sorry, not the volunteers, participants that she's gotten across the board. That includes parents and community members. So as she works, she's going to be coming into the district in April and May, and she's going to be working with parents also in April and May. So I'm looking forward to hearing from her as to what the year has yielded for her and what it means for us as a district.
Personnel needs, you've heard over the last two months what everybody's asking.
Personnel needs. You've heard over the last two months what everybody's asking for. Just the idea of staff that needs to be replaced. This is not new staff. This is staff that we know for... For usually it's retirement. What we need to cover so far, we have five elementary, one high school, four middle school, three at Samson. From the non-certificate staff, we have two paraprofessionals, one custodian, one secretary. And as Patrick just told you, the needs there in transportation is probably the largest needs, about 15 to 17 folks when he runs the gamut of of bus drivers, bus aides and mechanics that he's looking for. As you know from all the other presentations, our new staff currently has been cut. We don't have new staff or very little new staff coming on board. What we will do is if we do get any of the aid where some of that money can go back to staff, Dr. Shettyack and I along with Dr. Labby and Mr. Naster, we'll be looking at, you know, how much aid we get back, how much money we get back and where, you know, who... What needs are most important for the district and where that money should be spent if we're able to provide new staff for the district. I'm going to... Oops, sorry. Forgot to move this over. I'm going to turn it over now to my partner there in professional development, Mr. Christopher Howard, and he's going to discuss the highlights for professional development.
Good evening, everyone. Honored to be here this evening. So I was able to start this position in August, so I'm just going to kind of go through a little bit of a month by month highlight, what we've been pretty much doing and also what we're looking ahead to do in the next few months before we close up the academic school year in June. So like I said, I had the opportunity to start my position in August, right in the middle of our summer learning series. And I have a little bit more detailed notes than what you'll see here and I'll be able to share that with you at the end of the meeting. But our summer learning series was a fantastic program started by Dr. Shettyack and Ms. Nina Obrich, my predecessor, where we were bringing staff in during the summer for a variety of different topics. Just absolutely fantastic things from content specific to behavior management, classroom management, all of those things. And what we really saw was those K through five offerings were very well attended, usually by the same few, but still had the strongest numbers moving forward. We had a few early in July, encourse trainings by our amazing encourse staff that we hire here in the district. They're just our teachers, but they're our go-to for encourse. They did a great job bringing a few people in as we were moving to encourse classroom at the higher levels. We saw a little bit of participation as well with that. As I started in August, we kind of took over and again continued going through. One of the first events that I was able to plan out a little bit more was our new teacher orientation, excuse me, that took place in August. We welcomed, I mean, I think it was 65 certificated staff members this year, which the number is just absolutely amazing and ranges from all the buildings, pre-K through 12. We are hopefully looking to have smaller numbers for this upcoming year, but I feel we did a great job. It was a five-day orientation process and it ranged from having our own staff coming in to lead these amazing presentations about the programs that are offered in our K through fives. Our amazing team of mentor coordinators were there every day, not only to give the formal education, but a little bit of the informal as well, the Saraville way, how we do things, what to expect. And I cannot thank them enough. We have two at the high school and then one at every other school building and then we have one for both of our pre-Ks. And again, would love to share their names, just don't want to list them right now. But again, that was a great five-day orientation over two weeks and the feedback from that was very, very positive. A lot of people that have gone to other districts had said that this was one of the most thorough, if not the most thorough, orientation that they've ever had. Couple of things that we're still trying to shore up with that in regards to our technology availability and having our new staff with the accounts based on our Board of Education meetings and their approvals. That was the only little road bump that we hit, but again, our amazing staff and our mentor coordinators were able to pivot and provide them examples of what they were going to see as they started September one and two. And that kind of, again, brings us in to our September. And again, actually, one thing I forgot to mention about our August, one of our first events that occurred was August 3rd, was our CPI, which is our restraint training. We offered one of those sessions during the summer and we had, we maxed out the amount available spots for that. It's one of those little quantitative and qualitative data points that if we offer some of these required trainings during the summer, we actually are seeing a very large desire from our staff to come out and do it. And again, that helped out with our September one and two schedule, which is a little bit of our next monthly highlight where we had our first two days of orientation. And this year, we had to run our in-person suicide training, which was quite an epic feat to get everyone from the district rotating in and out of the high school for the presentation done by our own Bridget J. Venko to have that training. So that was really our September. And our pre-K staff did an amazing job. They brought in our Tools of the Mind training and again, they went back and forth. Move forward. Oh, I'm not forward yet. Oh, I apologize. There we go. Sorry about that. So again, like I said, the Tools of the Mind was in September and we got to meet our first PD committee meeting, which was a fantastic group of educators from every building, administrators that again, really set the tone for what we were going to accomplish over the year. October was a little bit more of a planning month. We all know that our big crown jewel of our PD department here is our November 8th, All District Staff PD Day. And again, with Dr. Shettyack, Dr. Agulies and myself, we set an extremely aggressive agenda to bring that back from a virtual setting to an in-person setting. And again, to be a little bit on the inside of that planning as a presenter over the last few years, to then now be one of the team members at the helm of putting on that event, it was just an absolutely amazing event from start to finish. And I just have to shout out one more person, another member of that team that really could not have been done without her was Ms. Barbara DeSantis, who was our tech integration teacher here in the district. Without her, we couldn't have gotten that whole event off the ground. So then in November, again, our first big event is of course that All Staff PD Day. Some stats from that, we welcomed over 30 outside presenters from some of the programs that we utilize here in the district to ones that we had just found and wanted to bring in kind of a little bit of new blood. One of the ones that I had done work with in the past and had gone and CPD from, EMC 2 with John Meehan. We actually selected his book for our Staff PD PLC Book Club selection as well this year. So we had plenty of outside presenters, but really what touches my heart is, and one of the goals of the PD department, we cultivated a lot of our own staff. We brought over 50 staff members, half of which had not really given PD yet in the district. We brought 50 members out to give PD to their peers. And when I tell you that when that feedback came back, I don't have children yet, but it was such a proud moment where we had peers that had never saw themselves like that before, had now all of a sudden this amazing boost of energy because what they brought to those PD sessions, their peers learned from it. Another highlight was we decided to try as hard as we can to get group-specific professional development in November. So it wasn't just for teachers or admin. We highlighted our paraprofessionals. We brought in as many sessions as we could so that our paras, our transportation, our cafeteria workers, they not only had a choice, but they had something geared towards them. Now, we weren't 100%. Not all of those groups were fairly represented, so that's of course going to be one of our big goals for our June 6th one coming up and of course, rolling on through November of next year. But again, to get that feedback from people who said, you know, "I never really had a choice before, but it was really great to see I had a choice this year." Our two sessions in the morning were really geared towards kind of like your role, your job, your responsibility. And then we opened up our afternoon, of course, we still had those role and responsibility positions, but then we opened up a lot of our afternoon for our SEL and kind of our more creative sessions, which included, you know, Adulting 101, Car Care, woodworking. We had etching, glass etching, right? Not the stained glass. Well, maybe nail you for that another time, glass etching, which again, people are still talking about. We had yoga. We had things though, that treated more than just the academic side of our staff. And again, that choice, that availability to choose where they wanted to go, really was one of the biggest positives that we took away from that. And again, we planned, I want to say, there was about 30 to 32 sessions per, or 31 or 32 options per time session. So our session one, session two and session three, we had over 32 options for our staff to select from. Now, some needed to be steered, of course. We did content, age, grade level. But again, that was just an amazing program that I was able to inherit from our predecessors and from Dr. Shettyack's work. And we were able to, I think, to take it to that next small step.
Chris, were there any mandatory ones for the new teachers?
There, so we have actually New Teacher Institute, which is again, another program that we're running. It's a little bit more, we started that in January this year. We were waiting for our space. But what we do is we take our year ones, year twos and year threes. We schedule, we try to schedule them about every month, month and a half, where they're taken out, they're received coverage and they meet with, again, a PD presenter, usually from our district because we have some amazing people here, the best really. And that's how we kind of do with our new teachers. So we've completed two of three year ones. We've completed, actually, next week will be the second session of year two. And our year three group was a little bit smaller. We had to separate our pre-Ks from the rest of our group because if you remember year two and year three, we hired Cheesequake and we had, the numbers are just too large. If we tried to pull out pre-K, we'd have to close the buildings and that's a no-no. Absolutely not. So we, with Ms. Nina Obrich and Ms. April Magistral, we were able to plan a whole nother set of PD. They'll be getting two sessions, March and April, and it will be very, very similar to what they would have gotten normally, but a little bit more geared because a little bit later in the year, needs change. But again, built by their administrators, built by the PD team and built with the feedback from the teachers. And again, we're trying not to affect the learning environment. Taking teachers out of a classroom when students are present's tough. So we want to limit as much as we can that disruption in the learning environment. So again, with the help of those other administrators, I think we have a really solid program moving forward.
Sounds awesome.
So again, that was the NTI. December was just our PLC kickoff, again, bringing our PLCs back from the all-virtual option. Again, people love the virtual option, but getting in a room discussing with everyone is really, there's a benefit to that that I think the more we do it, the more we'll see the benefit. January, we were able to move into this room. So close to getting our first NTI in here, but we had a little bit of a air conditioning project kind of interrupt. So we had that. Thank you for moving that. I appreciate that. And if you can also see, we have our Teacher Resource Center. These bookcases, I hope you've already looked and perused. They were just organized by our NHS students, helped us out with the Dewey Decimal. We didn't alphabetize them just yet, so don't, that's my bad. Don't, that's not the NHS students. But again, we offer, there's hundreds of texts and selections here for K through 12, pre-K as well. Teachers can fill out a form. We inter-office the book back. We're basically our own little library here. February, again, you know, we're continuing the NTI. I already kind of just mentioned how we have the pre-K one set. And in March and May, we're looking, or March through May, excuse me, we're looking to launch, relaunch our Thirsty Thursdays. Our goal here again, is to make it more grade level specific. So instead of having a K through five, a six through 12, where it's kind of a hit or miss, we're going to try to do a pre-K, a K, a one through three, a four, five, a six through eight and a nine through 12. Trying again, to make sure that any time spent attending these are well-spent. And also, you know, sometimes something wouldn't apply, you wouldn't sign up, or again, trying to produce as much participation as we possibly can with the Thirsty Thursdays. And they're going to range from about one hour to 90-minute sessions. And again, we're going to try to start them at great times, so to maximize participation. And then the big one, of course, is our upcoming PD Day 2.0, which is our June 6th. Very happy to get the opportunity again, to bring a unique program here to our staff. It's going to be a different kind of time structure, a different session structure, but again, we're going to take the strengths of our November 8th day, look to service the groups specifically, what they need, what they want. And it's kind of like to prepare now to look ahead. It being in June, we want that time to be spent, looking forward to the next school year. So articulation between grade levels, articulation at the greater scope, you know, either six through 12 or K through 12 focus, our amazing administrators from our building level principals and vice principals to our curriculum supervisors are all kind of getting together, which is an amazing time to have that type of discussion, to see how to better service the staff. We're going to look for paraprofessional programs and all of our other support groups that we have here in the district. We're really looking to make June 6th to be a little bit, have that November 8th bravado. We're going to do two sessions in the morning and then we're going to do our PLC showcases, which is a fantastic activity where all the work that the teachers have done and our paraprofessionals have done over the last 10 months, they get to share with their buildings. We're going to, you know, every building will have its own choice on how they're going to display. I know at the middle school and the high school, we're going to kind of do like a gallery walk where everybody displays in a room, very much like a science fair where you walk around to each and somebody presents what they did. So again, very much looking forward to that. And that's right now, the monthly breakdown. I know Parent University is something that we've all, as a district, looked to do. We do have actually a few upcoming sessions that I'd just like to share. Usually what I've found that if we blast out too early, we don't get, people either forget or they delete or put it to the side. So we're about to get a bunch of blasts though, because March 1st, we have a vaping awareness presentation that's taking place at the high school, vaping awareness. Our municipal government came in, they gave three amazing presentations to our middle school students, sixth grade, seventh, eighth and eighth grade. They now also are going to offer a parent one, which we're going to run out of the high school cafeteria. And again, I'm not going to try to, you know, say this too much, but we're also going to stream that out. So if anybody misses it, they can either chime in from home, but we're trying to get people in. Our borough is going to be paying for refreshments and the speaker, no cost to the district. But again, for someone who taught at the high school for the last 15 years, vaping is everywhere. So to bring this awareness and to bring the parents to our building, see what we're doing, see all the hard work that we're doing, I think that's the best way to do it. Our friends in Effective School Solutions also providing three virtual parent-based and parent-focused PD opportunities. On February 27th, we're going to be doing Language of Behaviors. Then a month later, on March 27th, Caring for the Caregiver, which is again, kind of like self-care for the people that have to give out the direction to the little ones. And then on April 10th, again, trying to, you know, have one every month. I love this one, "How to Talk to Your Kids and Survive." So for any parents out there, again, something that I think hopefully will be well-attended. And we have content-specific Parent University meetings that we've actually been running. And again, this wasn't at the direction of me. This was our amazing administrative staff that said, "There's something missing. Let's try to get a little bit more talk out to the community." So in November, December, we ran a math one with Ms. Maharana. We have the academies one actually happening in two days, which is going to be Ms. Maharana and Ms. O'Connor as well, all virtual. And then we have the Talented and Gifted Program with Ms. Francis. She's giving a presentation actually tomorrow. So would love for everybody to tune in. Again, it's an amazing opportunity to see the hard work that goes around behind the scenes to provide these programs for our students. And it's just amazing to be working alongside these administrators that have such this progressive ideology and then get the support from our upper administration on performing these great sessions for our parents.
As one of the noneducators on this board, each year you try to pick up a little bit here, you know, more and more. You've been at the last few meetings, right? I've been kind of beating the drum of professional development. I'm really happy to see that you, you know, put more, as much emphasis as you can. I'm sure this board will support you any way we can. Because, I mean, if you don't get people excited on the ground level, not to say, you know, you know what I'm saying, and it's contagious, you know? Pretty soon buildings get, you know, they just kind of whistle when they come to work kind of thing and they learn new things and it makes their job probably more exciting.
100%. And I have an amazing mentor and help from Dr. Shettyack because again, I'm learning the job as we kind of go. So little, a couple of things are a little bit later than we have run in previous years. We inherited an amazing program from my predecessors. Saraville University in itself is an amazing... You could do so much. So again, we're trying to balance that, keeping the teacher in the classroom with providing them with what they need. And I think we have a very high ceiling. I think we can keep going and the more we get involved, I think, on a positive and the more choice we provide, that's really what people are looking for. People want their time well-spent. We all know how precious it is and there's never enough. So one of the things that keep me up at night is wasted time, wasted PD. I want everybody coming back ready to share. That's something, again, Dr. Shettyack instills in a lot of the things that we do. We want the people to take the PD in and then turnkey it, pass it on and pay it back. We want the people to take the PD in and then turnkey it, pass it on, and pay it forward. And that's what I saw at the high school. When people did that, the sense of community that comes from that, there's no substitute.
Agreed. Good job.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Howard?
We're working on his enthusiasm, but...
I love being the cheerleader. You know, now being able to see the scope of what happens in the district, our staff, I mean, I was a high school teacher for fifteen years, now I'm in kindergarten classrooms. It's the passion, the dedication, and that's why lifting everyone up and giving them an opportunity to see not just different perspectives, but to show them that their craft is great, but we can always do a little more, or do things a little bit better.
Absolutely. Great. Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Love the enthusiasm.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
That concludes it. Any questions for HR? Perfect. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Labby. Excuse me. Ms. Beboan, you're up with our finance.
Okay. We had a meeting on Monday, February thirteenth, to discuss some items for, that are going around regarding the referendum. We did discuss the bid activity, what's going on there, so that's moving along. We also discussed the ESIP program, and we talked about completed projects such as roofs, boilers, and mechanical items as well that are going to be updated. Infrastructure, we're proud to say that Jimmy, I don't know if he's still in the room, but he gave his presentation before. He was working on the Slover, I never pronounce it, Slover, I always pronounce it wrong, the Slover HVAC system. He was waiting for one more thing to get done. He's very thorough, so he didn't want to, you know, approve it until everything was perfect. Also, he has a lot of other HVAC upgrades going on, and in different schools, he has electronic blinds, he's doing abatements, he's doing all kinds of stuff at all the other, all the district schools. He talked about the bus complex, we all talked about the bus complex, and how it's moving along, and, you know, we're still in early stages, but things are progressing. We also had good news on the middle school walk-in freezer. That's, work will be done at the end of the school year. Obviously, they can't stop the school cafeteria to put it in the freezer, so that had to wait. UES, where we're sitting right now, hopefully, will have some additional parking spaces in the school. We just awarded the professional services, so we're waiting on the architect. And then the Sayerville War Memorial High School stadium refurbishments, we also awarded a professional service, waiting on the architect for that. And then the finance, we did get a increase in the health benefits expenses, and that is pretty much it.
You know how much we got hit with this year?
It was like about...
It's about twenty percent on medical.
But it always starts high, doesn't it?
It does start high, so we'll see. I'm still, we're self-insured now, so I am still monitoring our expenditures as we go.
But even property and liability is up above fifteen percent.
Yeah.
That's like unheard of, isn't it?
And this is everywhere.
Usually, it's like five.
Yeah. This is everywhere, I've talked to other BAs. I mean, state health benefits went up fifteen point one percent this year. So it's not an anomaly, I think, you know, I think maybe it's like what we're seeing in every other industry, where costs are just going up.
Yeah.
Yeah, the cost of medical trend, I can tell you, because I am an insurance broker and licensed by the state of New Jersey, and I am also a benefits manager for seventy-four thousand life group. The cost of insurance is going up because of the bio-genetic medications, the specialty drugs that are providing lifesaving medications that never worked before for cystic fibrosis and MS. So these things, while they are helping us, they are adding to our costs, and unfortunately, there's nothing you can do about it. Claims are claims, illnesses are illnesses. So I think Erin does a good job managing our budget, so I'm sure we'll work it through.
Thank you.
Interesting. Okay, any other questions for Eileen? Thank you. Good job. Okay, who's next? Who's going to do personnel? You want to do it, Patrick, since you headed it up last year? Can you, can you, what, do you want to take it, Dr. Labby? Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I take Dr. Labby.
All right, sorry. I really didn't mean to do it. My apologies.
Dr. Agley briefed us on some vacancies, also on some substitute hiring.
Thank you. Any questions for anyone? Mrs. Bloom, we're getting closer.
Yes, we are.
All right.
We did have a virtual county meeting, which never makes me happy, but we did have a virtual meeting. And of course, the big topic was the elimination of the EDT PAP for the teachers, so we're grateful that that's gone. They keep letting us know that the governor eliminated it, so. Another thing that was brought up was the critical mapping information, which we have already done, but there's something about there's federal funding for that. So Erin, I throw it back to you, but schools that haven't, you know, we've done that, that's where we've labeled our doors, the police know, the layout of every school, that's becoming something that's being required, and there's federal funding, so.
Once again, we're ahead, right?
But once again, we're head and shoulders above the crowd.
We're ahead.
Information on literacy standards, I made cryptic notes here, so you guys probably know what I'm talking about. Partnership for Student Success, there's going to be funding for that, and I think that's to help the students that lost a lot during the COVID. And then facility funding, they're going to streamline the process for you to apply for facility funding. That's the information that we got from legislative, so. And then, of course, my big deal is the Anson Heroes. The invitation went out today for, to all of the students that have been chosen, and the deadline to respond is March sixth, so we will be moving forward with all of that and planning that, so. One board member, president or designate from each district.
No extra seats? If people cancel, can you just let people know on the board?
Yeah, they will let us know. The last indication that I got was there was about fifteen schools that hadn't responded, and I reached out to a couple of people that I knew, and we got that taken care of, so that's good. But I don't know if everyone has responded yet, they'll let me know. And if there are less people, if some schools haven't responded and there are openings, the number of people just got ridiculous, it was up over four hundred, because just like everybody, they're bringing everybody. So, I mean, the superintendents, of course, they pay for it, they can bring whoever they want, their association sponsors it, so.
Of course, sure.
But we want to try and keep it down, again, because of the planning, I'll be doing like planning a wedding, I'll be doing tables and who sits with who.
Hopefully, there's some extra seats for some of our guys.
Well, yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to squeeze you in. I don't know that they count me, because I'm there anyway, so.
It's true, so we should have one extra.
Okey-dokey. That's it for me.
Excellent.
And I might add that we have two very worthy candidates from Sereville. And if you recall, we do celebrate them at the end of the year, with the many students that we celebrate and recognize. So you will get a chance to meet them, you will get a chance to congratulate them in person.
That's great. Terrific. Terrific. Okay, any questions for Mrs. Bloom? Okay, seeing none, we'll go doubleheader, Sereville South Ambory Rotary, Mr. Fernandez, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Excuse me.
The Rotary is holding a blood drive here in Sereville at the Senior Center on May thirtieth. They're also going to be holding a canned food drive as well on that day. So if you can't donate, at least stop by and drop off some canned goods for a very worthy cause. Also, the Rotary is very proud to announce the first of an annual fundraiser to support youth sports, particularly our Bombers and our junior bomber football teams. It's going to be held on May sixteenth, it's going to be a bowling event, it's going to be an exciting event, I hope to see many of you there. If you bring enough people, you can have lanes yourselves, have your own team, we'll get you some more details on that, but we're very excited about that, and we hope we can get everyone out for a great event, for a great cause.
It's not just for adults, right? You can go to that, too, the bowling.
Anybody, anybody can go. It's going to be bowling, it's going to be able to come, we're going to have a certain number of lanes, you're going to have four to six people in a lane, so if you want to get your own team, and if the administrators want to bowl against the teachers, or if the teachers want to beat up on the administrators and show how much better they are, they're all welcome to come.
I have to warn you, I'm a turkey.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Any bowling shoes in those, the house you store your shoes in?
Yeah. No, I would break a nail if I bowled.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, good job. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public for any items pertaining to our agenda. Seeing none, we will close. Dr. Labby, would you like to take us through your report, sir?
Yes, and I'll go rather quickly, if you can get your attention on finance and infrastructure, number thirteen, which you can find on page three. We're asking you to accept the administrative review for the Food Services Program and to approve a corresponding corrective action plan, which primarily involves us putting in the verbiage "buy American." That language needs to be in all future school food authority bids, solicitations, and contacts. So we don't like having a corrective action plan, but...
It's a good one to have.
It's a good one to have. So again, "buy American" will be in all of our information going forward. Number fifteen, which you can find on page three, approval of change order M three to contract with Preferred Mechanical for the HVAC upgrades at multiple schools for material and labor to remove and replace unforeseen rotted piping at the Samso upper elementary school. And that change order is in the amount of five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, and it's deducted from our change order allowance of forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, leaving our balance at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Number seventeen, which you can find on page four, we're asking you to approve a contract with Aspire Technology Partners through a state contract, and that's for the purchase of data network equipment and associated licenses and professional services in the amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's for the upgrade of our Unified Computing System Fabric Interconnect, which I have absolutely no idea what that is, I could barely read it. Eric, you want to just briefly say what that is?
The short of it is our core server infrastructure. It is the component that interconnects all of those components, so it allows all of the servers to connect to the network backbone.
What'd he say? That's what they say, you're a genius if you can take something very complex and make it simple, which he just did. Thank you, Eric. Number twenty-five, number twenty-one, which you can find on page four, we're asking you to approve amendments to the two thousand nineteen long-range facilities plan, that's the last plan that we submitted to the Department of Education, and that's to include parking areas, you know, plans to potentially do a study on parking areas at the Eisenhower Elementary School, the middle school, and potentially the construction of a main entrance canopy at the middle school. And we're also asking for you to authorize Spiesel, which is our architect, to make that submission to the Department of Education on behalf of the district. We're not saying those are things that we're going to be doing, but in order to eventually do them, they have to be added to the last approved long-range facilities plan. Any questions on those items or anything else on finance and infrastructure? Yes, Mrs. Bloom?
I had a question on number fourteen. Could you explain what that is? The learning detective?
Oh, that's, that's one of Mr. Naster's contracts. Go ahead, Mr. Naster.
That's a vendor that we use to supplement our learning disability teacher consultant evaluation services. We previously asked this board to approve defined learning solutions, they can no longer do it, so we found another vendor and shifted the funds from the previous vendor to this vendor.
Okay, so this is for special education?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's something Mr. Naster started a while ago. Our child study team members have large case volume, and in order to offset that, especially during the spring, which is our annual review time period, and sometimes when we do triennial evaluations, so most year evaluations tend to take place in the spring, so in order to help them, Mr. Naster goes ahead, and we provide that purchase professional service, which is well-received by our child study team members.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything else on finance and infrastructure? Okay, moving ahead to student achievement. It's coming, the summer is coming, the weather is an indicator of it. Within no time, we will be implementing our summer programs, and numbers one through three pertain to that, you can find it on pages nine and ten. We're asking you to approve Camp Excel Extended School Year Integrated Summer and Learning Program, as well as the Learning Acceleration Summer Program, all of which will be at the Samso upper elementary school and the Slover School, as well as at one thirty-two Main Street, and that will take place from July third through August third. We're also asking you to approve the Middle School Credit Completion Summer School Program, which will take place from July third through August tenth. So we are at that time, where we're starting to think about our summer program and the warm weather that's going to hopefully come with it. Number six and seven, which you can find on page ten, we have two incredibly interesting clubs, the Middle Eastern North African Cultural Club, which we thank Ms. Sarah Sullivan, one of our world languages teachers, for agreeing to be the advisor for, and a dance club at Sereville War Memorial High School as well, with Ms. Chupka as the advisor for that club. So two very interesting clubs that I think many of our kids will participate and enjoy. Any questions about those items or anything else on student achievement?
I do have a question.
Sure.
And it's been a question for, since I joined the board, but I never asked it. Why do we have to approve the admission of a kindergarten student? Like, if they don't go in the beginning, we have to approve them as they join?
It's board policy, and it's been like that for, since I've been here. Was there ever any explanation as to why we do that, Dr. Shadak?
But I mean, is that like a new student?
It's a good question, I thought that was state-regulated.
Is that a new student? Like, every new student that comes in off-cycle has to be approved by the board?
Just for kindergarten.
Wow, okay.
It's after, I believe...
That is really weird.
I believe it's after November first.
And why do we have to approve it? Like, what's...
It's board policy.
That's the only reason why we do it, because it's board policy. Maybe the Governance Committee, we can look at potentially eliminating that. Good question, though.
Because it just seems so weird, you know, like a little kindergarten kid, oh, we've got to be approved to get in, you know?
I think the spirit of it was, years ago, before we had these sophisticated preschool programs, this was an indicator that a child was coming into the school district in kindergarten later in the school year with minimal, if any, education prior to that. That's the only thing I can think of. Good question. Moving along to governance, there's one of two items, number two, which you can find on page twelve, we're asking you to approve new and revised Board of Education policies and regulations. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned it in my summary email to you, we have about fourteen policies that we're asking you to eventually approve for revisions. Some are new, some are mildly revised, some are significantly revised. We're doing the first seven now, we'll be doing the next seven during the March seventh Board of Education Business Meeting. And again, this is a first reading, so if anybody finds anything in any of the policies and regulations that we're asking you to approve for a first reading now, you feel like there should be revision, or you have questions about it, let us know, because we can change that before you actually approve it for a second and final reading. That's why we have them read twice. Any questions on governance? Okay, and moving to personnel, I'm going to skip over number one, because it's going to take some time to cover number one. It's going to get a little bit emotional, so I'm just going to skip over that for now. I'm going to go to items number five and nine, which you can find on page fourteen and fifteen. We're asking you to appoint some advisors and coaches for this school year and for the next school year. Numbers thirteen and fourteen, which you can find in the addendum, we're asking you to approve faculty to provide tier-three tutoring, as well as to teach in the Rising Stars Program, yet another one of those supplemental tutoring programs that we offer our students, so that they can excel and gain some of that learning that's been lost. And numbers nineteen and twenty, we're asking you to hire new certified and non-certified staff. It's actually one staff member that's certified and one staff member that's non-certified. I don't recall the last time that we only had two people that we were asking you to appoint during a board meeting, but you can find that on nineteen and twenty and the addendum. So moving along to number one, we have a, again, one of those bittersweet moments. We are asking you to accept the retirements of some amazing educators that have dedicated their lives to educating children, and most importantly, to Sereville. So I'm going to begin with Lori Begon. Lori Begon, English as a second language teacher at the Sereville Middle School, for Lori Biegen, English as a second language teacher at the Saraville Middle School. For the last four years, we'll be retiring at the end of the 2022-2023 school year. While Lori did not spend the majority of her teaching career with us, as she worked in Monroe for many years, she has been a lifelong bomber. A valued community member, Lori has spent countless hours teaching and coaching during her time at the middle school, working with and supporting the football, softball, and soccer programs. One of her major accomplishments was organizing a new girls' flag football team a couple of years ago. She actually obtained a grant to fund the program, and they actually played at MetLife Stadium, which was pretty amazing. So, that, that would not have happened without Lori Biegen. When discussing Lori, what comes to mind is her limitless energy, big smile, and huge heart. Her willingness to help and her desire to support every child never goes unnoticed. She is an amazing individual who takes great care of our students as they were her own children. Mrs. Biegen can invigorate the classroom environment through her kindness and patience. She makes her classroom come alive with her teaching. She uses teachable moments in her experience as a teacher to capture the attention and imagination of all her students. When a teacher of this magnitude decides to retire, we celebrate her time in the classroom and her dedication to molding and shaping young minds. We celebrate the fact that the students leave the classroom better, stronger, and wiser for having had such a dynamic teacher. We join Lori and her family in celebrating an excellent career, even though we, as our middle school, as the middle school family and the district family, will miss her terribly. Congratulations on your retirement, Lori. We wish you the best in the next chapter of your life. And like so many people, I did have the opportunity to know Lori quite well, and not only is she an extraordinary educator, she's just an amazing person, an incredible wife, and the best mom that I think any child could ask for. And, you know, as a colleague, the best colleague that you could ask for and/or friend. Like, like I read, she just had this smile that lit you up. She had this heart that basically spoke to you and said, whatever you need, I'm there for you. Just an incredible person and extraordinary teacher that we're going to miss dearly. So, on behalf of the staff and students and the Board of Education of Saraville, we thank Lori Biegen for her outstanding service to our district and the impeccable way in which she has represented us. Noreen Mahoney. Noreen Mahoney is an outstanding counselor who works tirelessly to provide academic, emotional, and personal counseling and services to the students of the Wilson School. Throughout her years in the Saraville Public Schools, Ms. Mahoney has served as a role model for the district's younger counselors. As an elementary school counselor, Noreen has served as the school's anti-bullying specialist, the coordinator of the school's safety committee, the chairperson of the school's 504 committee, and the liaison with the Department of Child Protection and Permanency. She is a member of the Wilson School's RTI and countless other committees, teaches daily lessons to her, to her students, and provides assistance to her lunch buddy friendship groups. Ms. Mahoney is a licensed clinical social worker and a registered play therapist. After serving the children of Elizabeth and Saraville, she now has decided to leave the world of public education and enter the realm of private practice. All of us in the Saraville Public Schools thank her for her service to the district and wish her much success in her new endeavors. She will be missed for her expressions of clear thinking, care, and compassion. And again, I did have the opportunity to work very closely with Noreen. Again, just a remarkable educator, has dedicated her life, life to helping young children, especially as young as kindergarten, develop and grow into outstanding young people. She started with us as a, a school social worker, which you, was titled as, but she transitioned. We needed her to transition to a school counselor, and she did so effortlessly, and has just done an incredible job. I worked with her real closely in terms of implementing the Response to Intervention Program at the Wilson School, which she immediately took to and implemented with several different administrators there, and it, it's just a great program that, that, you know, we have for our students there, and much of it is due to her. So, she's a remarkable person and incredible counselor and someone that we're going to miss dearly. So, on behalf of the Saraville Township Public, Saraville Public Schools students and staff, we thank Ms. Mahoney for her impeccable service, and we commend her on her outstanding service to the district. And now, the hard one. You know, when Marilyn walked into my office to tell me that she was done with me. Done with you, Labby. Joe, she actually said, "I'm leaving you, Labby." I, I, I was hoping and praying that she would change her mind, so I didn't write anything down, because I just thought that she'd come back in my office one point or another to say, "You know what? I've decided I'm not going anywhere." But that day didn't come. So, what can I say about Marilyn? The first word that pops into my mind when I think of Dr. Marilyn Shettyak is patriarch. If there ever was a patriarch to the Saraville Public Schools, at least within the last thirty to four years, I can't think of anybody else other than Dr. Marilyn Shettyak. I know that Dr. Parnell was a huge figure in this district. I know it because I, I worked in the district when she was here. Amazing woman, amazing educator. Carla Southern, Georgia Baumann, these are all huge names in Saraville. But I have to say, in my humble opinion, I don't think either one of those names are as big and are as impactful as Dr. Marilyn Shettyak. Marilyn started in the district in 1990. Actually, she started in 1989 as a substitute teacher. And after showing the many principals in this district what she could do, the Wilson School principal at the time realized what she had, and she asked Marilyn to join the Wilson family. And Marilyn spent quite a bit of time at the Wilson School as a third and fourth grade teacher, as well as an ASI teacher. And when it was time for Marilyn to decide whether she could impact more learners, which she knew she could, she decided to make a, a pretty big career jump, going from an elementary educator to a high school vice principal, which speaks volumes not only about her competency, her proficiency, but her confidence and her courage. She wanted to make a difference to more people, and she knew in order to do that, she needed to make a change. She needed to take a risk, and she did so. And boy, did this district ever reap the benefits, because shortly, within a year, the administration in Saraville recognized what kind of talent they had, and they immediately promoted her to, and I love this title, the Director of, oh, I forgot the right, Research, no, it was Research Evaluation and, and Planning, which, very, very interesting title. She performed so well there that they then promoted her to be Director of Curriculum, and then eventually, in 2011, she was appointed the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. And I got to tell you, this district never looked back once she came aboard and she began to effectuate change. And that's what we do as leaders, and that's sometimes what people don't understand. Our job is to effectuate change, and change is hard, because change, you know, when you ask people to change what they're doing, there's a lot of stress in that. But when you're doing it for the right reasons, and those reasons primarily involve the betterment of children, change is necessary. And when I think about the changes that Marilyn has made to this district, it'll blow your mind. Countless curriculum, countless courses, countless teachers that have been improved and enhanced by her, but to name some of the big ones, she was one of the first administrators, and we didn't even talk about this, to come in and begin to write curriculum using understanding by design. And she did so well ahead of the curve. While other districts were writing in a more, I'll say, archaic way, Marilyn was at the forefront, using understanding by design as a format for our curriculum. She then moved ahead and did some other incredible things, like standardized grading for our elementary schools, well before anyone who's doing standardized grading. Saraville was the model for, for standardized grading, and that's because of Marilyn. Quarterly exams. While everyone was still stuck in final exams, we moved to quarterly exams, and now everybody followed us. Fontance of Pinnell, Envision Math, the restructuring of our math curriculum, the alignment of those courses, having our students take algebra as eighth graders, all ahead of the curve, all pivotal in moving this district forward. You name it, we've done it here in Saraville, but we've done it in Saraville because of one person, and that's our patriarch, and that's Dr. Marilyn Shettyak. And on a personal level, I came to this district eight years ago, and you all know, if you were on the board then, even if you weren't, we went through some pretty turbulent times. And I always had my rock next to me. I heard something about great leaders, and this one person talked about great leaders, powerful leaders. They say very little, but when they talk, people listen. Marilyn doesn't say too much, too often, but I can guarantee you, when she speaks, we all listen. And during that turbulent time, she kept me going. She gave me everything and anything that I needed to keep moving. And you all that were on the board through some of these things that we've gone through, some tough things, and without a powerful leader, and I'm not talking about me, we wouldn't have gotten through it, because that powerful leader helped me get through it. So, I'll always be forever in your debt for everything that you taught me and everything that you inspired of me. And most importantly, for just being the model leader that I have always envisioned and this district has reaped the benefit of. So, Marilyn, I know some of the people are going to chime in. We can't thank you enough, I can't thank you enough, for everything that you've done for this district, this community, and myself. And I know you're going to miss this place. You're going to miss me, too, I think you are. Joe, she's going to miss me. But if you talk to Marilyn on a personal level, you know that the most important people in her life are actually the people sitting right over here. Joe, her son, her daughter, her grandchildren. You want to see someone light up like a bonfire, listen to Marilyn talk about her family, and about her shore house, which she's never invited me to, by the way. So, I know that she's in good hands, and I know that she's going to have the time of her life during the next chapter of that wonderful life. But again, we thank Joe, Marilyn's sons and daughter, grandchildren, for giving us Marilyn for the thirty years that we've had her. We can't thank you guys enough for that. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah, I'll reserve mine for when we get closer to June, but I have to tell you, I'm going to hire you to do my eulogy. You're good. You're really good. But, but, you know, you could just see, he means every word, so, you know? But thank you for everything. We'll, you know, we'll give my little two cents in June, but... Does anyone else have anything to say at this point?
Oh, of course. Oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm the only other person who actually worked with Marilyn, who's still on this board, and she came before me, and she left after me, she outlasted me, God bless her. I don't know that we ever interacted when I was teaching in any major way, but Marilyn always was calm and quiet and did it behind the scenes, and I think everybody appreciates that in any leader. I will miss you. Joe will be happy that you're home, but you have to come to AC anyway, okay?
Who's going to chaperone me? Which is, you're going to be stuck chaperoning me now all the time.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
But I want to wish you the best. Enjoy. The grandchildren are going to be the light of your life, and maybe you'll invite me to the shore house, I don't know. So, have a wonderful retirement, but I have to also say one thing before I finish, and then, then I'll turn it over to Eileen. I wanted to say something about Lori. Once again, I didn't work with Lori, because I was already retired when she came into the district, but this is a woman who is absolutely, always so happy to see you, like you were a long-lost friend, and God love her, she gave her husband a kidney, people. She gave a kidney, you know? You don't need to say more than that. This is the big heart, this is the person that she is, so we wish Lori all the best in her retirement, and of course, Noreen, who has done wonders for, for her children over there at Wilson. Thank you very much.
I would like to say, I haven't worked with you long, but I did know you when we were on the Parent Advisory Council, and you were always very calm, like Lucy said, you have a very good demeanor, even when people are "wrrr" on you, you're like, whoa, 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 go on, you know? And, and...
Yeah, I was looking there, too. She's like that at home.
I don't know how she is at, at home, but here, she's very calm. And what I would like to thank, on behalf of all the parents in Saraville, the public, okay, you kept your word with regard to the curriculum. I know people were very upset about that. They were not expecting it to come out the way it did, and, you know, I really appreciate it, because I, I went through a lot of crap on Facebook about that, and you just came out just clear, and you did exactly what you said, what you promised to the public, it worked out, and I just want to say thank you for the children and for all the parents, because you were a big part, you were the reason why that curriculum was satisfactory for us, so thank you very much.
Wait.
You can't forget me, though, because I share the name of somebody, don't I? I'll come into the shore house first. And Joe, I just want to say, it was nice to meet Joe. I had fun hanging out with him. He's hiding over there. So, I'm glad I got to spend that personal, you know, a little bit of fun with you. I had a great time.
Okay.
The fish, remember the fish?
Yes. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Marilyn. Oh, sorry, Mr. Van Ness.
That's okay.
I'll wait until June, so...
Obviously, we didn't get much of a chance to really get to know each other, but I did get to know you a little bit at the convention. As Dr. Labby illustrated, it was obvious, your strong commitment to your family and the genuinely good person, and good, and good, and good family person you are, and that's the impact that I'll always remember you by. And I think that's truly the best measure of a person, so I want to thank you for your years of service to our, to our students and our, and our community, and wish you all, all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you right now.
Okay.
I have something to say. I'll say it in June.
Okay. The lobby, back to you.
That concludes my report.
All right. Any final, final chance for any questions pertaining to Dr. Labby's report from us?
Didn't even need the playoff music tonight.
No, that's great.
Yeah, we didn't have to give you that "do, do, do, do."
Okay. It's very good. Do you have a motion to detain the Dr. Labby's report, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Bloom and Mrs. Bobone. Roll call, please, sorry. Roll call, please, sorry.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
I have to abstain. On page two, number five, check number 158670. Yes on everything else.
Good job.
Mrs. Bobon?
That's because you got me in the line of fire, and I was like, got to look.
Mrs. Bobon?
Oh, yes. I'm like, who?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Esposito.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, we'll open it up to the public for any items pertaining to our district. I don't see any. We will close the public portion. Any final thoughts from our board this evening before we close shop? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Bloom, Pat, all in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? See you next week, a couple of weeks, guys.
Thank you.